Ball of favor? Anyone who wants to... Okay. We're coming out of closed session. We did have a change on the agenda. We are moving item number one on the closed session agenda to the public portion. So, we did not discuss item number one in closed session. And I guess we can do that now. Is it Gregory Farrenbach? Are you over here?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, the heading on the agenda is "Discussion with GMA or Administrator's Search." So, the floor is yours. And why don't you give us a little background on who you are, what you do, what your company does, and what you need from us for when you're proposing?
... Several shared services types of consultations. ... Several shared services types of consultations. 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 Several shared services types of consultations.
Now, we're Englewood Cliffs. We're not Englewood. We're Englewood Cliffs. Where you're from. Englewood is another town.
I'm short.
Well, if you're short, then you're in the wrong town. You'll get used to it.
.....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
One moment, Greg, please.
Greg, one moment. Greg, can you hear me? Just give me one moment.
Tell him to turn.
Can you count? Testing. Let me test it. Test.
Can you count, Greg?
Everyone turn their microphones off. Turn them off. Turn your microphone off.
I do. I'm running a meeting.
You gotta turn it off. It wasn't gonna give feedback. You wanna hear him, you gotta turn your microphone off.
We're not gonna hear him anyway. Why doesn't he just come here in person? Get us proper.
My director showed that Greg won the walkway. Turn on his mic so you can hear the presentation.
My microphone's off.
Mine's your mic, off. Yeah, yours is off. This one's on.
I thought you were the audio/video guy.
I'm trying my best. You know. Okay. Now, you have to make sure that this is going out. Is it talking?
No.
How do you talk?
Can you say something, Mr. Farrenbach?
Would you just want to test and come back when you're ready?
Good.
Keep on talking.
Keep talking.
Yep. Mr. Farrenbach, keep.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Thank you.
Please continue. It's easier to turn off the microphone.
I'll keep holding.
Okay. We hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Hey, can you start over? You can't hear me.
Or can you provide in some direction what I'm supposed to do?
Can you hear the mayor?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. So, you heard parts of what you're saying. I know there was a December 4th memorandum that you prepared. I got it today. And you're touching on some issues. I don't think, based on what you're saying, that you have a good understanding of this town and its history. But putting that aside, what can you actually do for us?
What I indicated was, by all the requirements that you may not record, was that I do not feel as if we would be able to recruit a qualified professional to be able to take on this position of all of the professionals that exist in New Jersey that are typically applicants for this sort of position. I do believe that we would be able to assist you in walking through a recruitment and selection process, but I would not be guaranteeing to you that we would be able to find and identify the right person for this position. So, I guess there are three elements to what I'm saying. One is, so long as the governing body wishes government management advisors to continue in the role of interim borough administrator, we will do so. To the extent that we would wish government management advisors to assist you in a recruitment and selection process, we will do that. Not as a typical executive search, but as a party who insists you in going through the steps that we need to make to choose the right person. I would also mention to you that there are three other firms in New Jersey. The Panningwood, Jersey Professional Management, Matthew Watkins, who worked in the northern New Jersey borough in this borough. And you could speak to them about pursuing executive search, if that is what you wish to do. We don't want to leave you in the lurch, and we are willing to provide you assistance, but we're not willing to be dispensable for a complete executive search, because I have strong feelings about the difficulty of being successful in the borough.
Okay. So, what are we doing? What are we doing here? They basically tell us they can't do anything. I didn't invite them. I don't know what's going on. I'm not looking at you. I'm asking Ken. I'm looking at Ken actually. What are we doing here? We've got this gentleman on the phone. Is there any other feedback you'd like to give us, Greg?
I think I provided that feedback in...
The gentleman had the opportunity to keep on. We had an opportunity, but we didn't have it as long as other people have. We got it today. Pretty short. Pretty to the point. Do you have any questions?
Actually, it wasn't to the point. It was somewhat rambling to me. But if, in a nutshell, what you're saying is you'll give us guidelines to recruit, but you don't want any responsibility for recruiting. So, how would you get paid for giving us guidelines that we all pretty much figure out on our own?
Well, we're not... No, that's not what I was suggesting. But it would be on an hourly basis, and we would provide you services with you as a governing body, which is you want to receive.
All right. So, why don't we do this? If you want, make us a proposal, and then we'll be good next week. Greg, we discussed a flat fee basis. Right? It's not an option anymore, or...
From the point in terms of an upper limit, it would be on an hourly basis with an upper limit, because that is what the government contracts while we're there.
We don't have upper limits. And before we do, I guess, as put your memo, part of the constraints for me, what, to change the ordinance to open-ended, is that correct?
We don't have to do that, and nobody would be able to get somebody who's completely successful in their current position, which is the way it's laid out.
So, I suppose it's something that the council needs to think about, and perhaps putting in the ordinance potentially possible?
But you have to wait up until after January, I guess.
Okay. So, after January. Fair enough. So, this is something that I suppose government management services feels very strongly about, and do you have any questions regarding that, guys, while you're just here?
Thank you. Greg, I would imagine, and frankly, if I'm wrong, that you have a pool of hired borough administrators that have years of experience, such as Jewel, that you might need a position for in the city of this borough. As a future, for let's say, new year, you stand in that forum, and the running picket and you would recommend someone that has years and years of experience and has the breadth of knowledge. And how would that administrator, if you've got this considering memo, would agree, how would that take over? How would that sit? If you could draw a picture for us, a, let's put it this way, a diagnosis for Englewood Cliffs, and what would be the best way to move forward?
I'm not sure I'm fully understanding what you're saying, but what I was trying to say about the problem of having a one-year term is that the only other place of which I'm aware that there is a term limit is when we're talking about the small-mayor form of government in which the term of the administrator is determinous without a mayor as our old department has. And that is a four-year term. All other administrative positions, whether they be in boroughs, townships, towns, villages, they are open-ended, under the statute that empowers municipalities to hire administrators. And the only limitation on that appointment is a 90-day second strike. And that is it. And what I'm saying is that if you're looking for a professional who has been successful previously to come into this position and to serve this municipality appropriately, I am not going to lose a piece of dry ground for the purposes of testing this, which is not a piece of dry ground.
Well, Greg, if I can interrupt you. We had that. In fact, that person is still on the table. So, what would you recommend?
When you say "we had that," what do you mean by that, David?
I'm not sure if I can get into details, because that person might have to work. But we had that position. We had a... What I can say is that we had a clerk, and we had, as a part-time, or as a clerk, was the administrator.
Previously had.
Previously had, before that person was put on administrative duty. For me, it doesn't make sense to be paying a person, and that person knows the borough probably better than anyone else. So, I am kind of perplexed at what we're doing here, when the answer is really so simple.
Well, what you're discussing, though, David, is a clerk, right? We're discussing an administrator.
I'm also discussing the administrator.
Right. But it's two totally different things, right?
Well, in a lot of towns, Greg, this town's this size, do they have a full-time administrator? Or does the clerk often take on extra responsibilities as the administrator, as was started in this town?
There are towns smaller than you that have full-time administrators, and there are towns larger than you that have a joint clerk-administrative position.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I guess the only question I have, Greg, is, Glenn, this young... You're saying that someone wouldn't want to come here because of, because it's Englewood Cliff's volatility, but I hear what you're saying about a one-year contract. But to me, an open-ended, they could come here today, be terminated next month, and only be entitled to a 90-day's pay. If they're guaranteed a year contract, isn't that making more attractive to come here for a year, knowing that, you know, they're here for a year, instead of they could just be terminated and only be owed 90 days' pay?
Now, if they know that they can remain in their current position on an open-ended basis, potentially forever, no.
Oh, you mean for someone to leave somewhere else?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I'm just talking in general. Someone at... I don't think anybody would want to leave where they're at to come here. Okay? So, let's just lay that on the bedrock. So, Greg, because we're gonna hire someone, thus our former administrator, but maybe then, you know, but to me, just in general, if someone is going to come somewhere and not leave where they're at, like Councilman Gabriel Rorio mentioned, someone who is seasoned, maybe someone who just recently retired, whatever, I mean, isn't a one-year contract more attractive than an open-ended one?
I can only say, from my experience, from my experience, the answer's no.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Farrenbach, it sounds like you're basically leading us in a direction of having your firm stay on at, I don't know, $200 an hour, so that's kind of self-serving. What we actually want to talk to you tonight about is finding someone to run this town. And so, put your economics aside, I'm hearing that you can't really help us.
As I just indicated, that is not what I'm saying, but if that's the way you want to perceive it, I am not going to argue with you.
Well, ultimately, it's the council's decision, so you may actually fare better with them than you will with me.
So... If I may, with all due respect, towns that I'm familiar with, that are very successful, view the mayor and council as a body, and while there would be differences of opinion on various issues, they act as a body. They reach consensus among themselves, and it doesn't become a "I have four votes." It doesn't become "well, it's the council." "Well, it's the mayor." It becomes a matter of consensus. And I would suggest that that model would be better in this environment.
So, that all sounds great, but despite all that, you still sent that memo into one member of the governing body, and none of us got it until today. So, you're not really practicing...
I sent it to one member of the government.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let me finish. Let me finish. Let me finish. You're not actually practicing what you preach, right? Because you have your own employee here. Jewel's here. She could have sent it to us. We could have read it. We could have had time to ask 10 questions. Instead, we get it today. So, you're really not practicing what you preach, and I've been through a lot of pitches in my life. I would vote against you.
The request I received was from the council president. I submitted it to the council president, and he indicated he was going to circulate it to the rest of the members of the governing body.
And who was your memo addressed to?
It's addressed to the entire governing body.
Right. Including the mayor.
It's intended for the entire governing body.
Okay. All right. Fair enough.
Mayor, I think you understand that it's not Mr. Farrenbach's issue. He... Matt gave an accurate answer of what the delay was. As far as I'm concerned, other input I want to give is, I don't know who Matthew Watkins is, but you mentioned a couple of other outfits, Greg, and I just want this council to realize that I have contacted these people, and they have zero interest in working with me. So, as far as I'm concerned, this borough hall is in dire need of moving forward in a progressive way, and I don't see as... I think that we should welcome any help that we get, as opposed to pushing it away. So, I'm all for any... I'm all for any sort of help or any sort of network that Greg possibly leveraged for us. Ultimately, his decision is up to the council, but I think that we would be making a bigger state if we didn't invest heavily in bringing a more professional atmosphere to this borough. As far as I'm concerned, it's probably a main component on why we're in the situation that we're in. Had this been done years ago, we probably would be facing a lot of the problems that we have today. So, much of this needs to be corrected.
Mr. Farrenbach, in preparation for tonight, I ran a PACER case locator search, and I had some cases where you come up. I'm not sure if it's you or someone with the same name. Do you have any pending litigations against your firm or against you?
I'm aware of mine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for joining us. And do you want to do anything else today?
Yeah. I mean... Does anybody else have any more questions? Because this is an opportunity to ask an individual who has a pretty strong network within the community, and this is your opportunity, everyone. He brought up critical issues within that memo that need to be addressed, and I'm hoping that the council supports everything that he had to say.
Well, honestly, though, Ken, a lot of... A lot of the things that he mentioned in his memo are things that we've been saying a while along. I've been here for six years. Those are real issues, but it's kind of like master of the obvious, where you're trying to tell us what we already know. Yes, there are behavioral problems in Borough Hall, but there is also a political problem in Borough Hall, right?
And I think the biggest problem is that you need to have an administrative arm that has some sort of autonomy to run.
The mayor doesn't have anything.
No. Enough.
This goes back to...
Six years since the mayor.
You're interrupting, Mr. Kachubis. You do not have the floor.
This goes back to what we were discussing, what Greg brings up in the memo, everyone. I think that everyone really needs to be conscious of the fact that if it doesn't pertain to public good, there's no reason to be going back and forth about this completely.
Greg, first of all, I'd like to thank you. You seem like a very strange and steady person, and I think you know exactly what's going on in Englewood Cliffs. It doesn't take... I mean, if you look at a few of the council meetings, you can see that there's a severe dysfunction here. There's a total lack of trust. I'd call it a cesspool of contempt. And I don't mind disagreeing with somebody, but when a weak mayor model then weaponizes attorneys to go after other council people, the problem basically is coming from the top and the type of leadership, if you want to call it that, that we have. And I think that to empower any administrator is a very good thing, and to weaken it, it's a weak mayor model we have in this town. Mayor, basically, is part of the governing body. It only votes when there's a top. So, I'm in agreement with you.
Do you really think he cares about...
And you're interrupting me.
Do you really think he cares? He knows. He knows.
You're interrupting me.
Now, you're just talking to hear yourself. So, listen to the lead-in forward.
Just because it's not flattering to you.
No, I'm fine. I know you say the same thing all the time. If you're not saying it, you're writing it. And if you're not writing and saying it, Karen Geiger is writing it.
So, I would say, I would be in support of your moving ahead and trying to find a rocky, solid... I guess you're on to a certain finite time, right? And finding someone who's rock-solid, who can deal with this and plow through it. I mean, you need the equivalent of one of those ships that can go through ice. It's terrible. It's a horrible situation that we have here. You know who loses? It's the townspeople that lose. The residents that lose. And, you know, I'm just sorry for it. I'm very proud to be on this side of the angels.
You always are. You're always... Your hands are always clean, David. So nice.
Mark, hit the button so I can see which one it is. I can see why you're tied to my phone. Mark, hit the button so I can see which one it is. Go ahead.
Do you hear me?
Yeah.
Greg, my opinion is our town, really, we need a professional administrator. First of all, they should be independent, not inclined toward any party, politically[1758.24] nothing involving, just for the residents, not for the mayor, not for the Democrat, not for the Republican. Even the three-year term, really, he can lead very fairly for our town, doesn't matter about it. We can spend more money, and then we want to keep, you know, establish our town to follow rules and regulations, regulations that I prefer. So, I know that one year, that we cannot, you know, hire good people, I know that. Who's going to, you know, apply about just one year term? I think we need a minimum three-year term, but we have to carefully select and interview those candidates, we have to select them. I really don't worry about that administrative position to incline any party or any person, really, I hate it, maybe all our town residents don't like them. So, please, you sincerely work hard and try your best, and then hopefully for us, we can discuss about it. That's my position, so take it. Yeah, I will, thank you.
Do you have any feedback to Mark Park's comments, Greg?
I was only able to pick up every other word, I was having great difficulty being able to hear.
So, I'm just going to summarize since I'm here, Mark, and please correct me for more. He's searching, he's advocating for a strong individual who's going to carry out their goals and their objectives in an equalistic fashion, and I believe that Mr. Park thinks that the council would support this type of individual, and he's also on board with a longer-term... Now, what Greg was saying before, Mark, he thinks that it should be open-ended, but Mark is saying, open-ended meaning it's indefinite when the person can be let go, is that right? Can you explain that to us? Because what Mark was saying was more of a three-year term.
What I am suggesting, and what exists almost universally, under the statute that I refer to in the ring, is that a person is appointed to the position. They are continuously praised and evaluated by the governing body regarding their performance. That in the event, at some point in the future, the performance of that person in the position is not satisfactory, and attempts to be able to correct that performance have not been successful, that the person then is given 90 days' notice, or, in the alternative, is given 90 days' severance. That is what I am discussing. In the event, it is the council's desire to still have a term that simply means that during that one-year, three-year, five-year period, whatever it may be, that if the person is considered to be unsatisfactory, while they may be eligible for the 90 days' severance under the law, you now have the added problem of the fact that you've authorized the person to stay for a length of time, and by authorizing that person to stay for a length of time, you may be burdened with having to pay that person through the end of that term. And that is generally why an opening appointment is considered to be more preferable, and it is almost universal, where the position is being created under the section I refer to, 48, 49, yes, on 3rd Avenue.
Thank you, Greg. Does anybody have any other questions regarding this memo? Dave?
I'm good.
Okay, yeah, Greg. If you can, suppose the next step is to what? To submit to the council a formal proposal, is that right?
Yes, yes. I will do that along the lines of what I suggested, which is to be of assistance to the municipal to be able to proceed through this process.
Okay. Thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Have a good rest of the evening.
You too.
I will leave it at this point, I assume? Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, I will leave, have a good evening, and go home.
Good evening, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can I have a motion to open to the public? All favor? Okay, we're now open to the public. If anyone from the public wishes to be heard, please, I'd like you to recognize here, the name, the address.
Is the microphone used?
That one's good. Camera's over there. Microphone's over there.
Where's the microphone?
Microphone's right there.
Oh, so that's... The one I'm using, and you're going, the microphone's over there.
No, no, camera's over there. Microphone's over there. But that's all weak for the tape. That's not... okay, let me get your microphone for the room.
Attorney will hear you, don't worry. Sorry? I said, you're an attorney, will hear you, don't worry. You're more than a voice.
How do you look?
Work is leaving.
Check. Check, check, check.
David, turn mine back on.
Okay, you're good to go.
Turn mine back on.
That's actually a little... well, I guess that's okay.
There you go.
Ouch, that's a little bit loud, too. Hello, 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 that's better, that's good. Okay. Albert H. Munch III, Angled Cliff, Jersey, 47th Avenue. When we were here last week, it was brought up that this committee for now-lawal was okay. Apparently, some attorney looked this up, I don't know who. But the question is, was it a licensed New Jersey attorney that looked this up? Because I didn't see anything that would give any type of protection, of attorney-client privilege, for a group that includes a non-member of the council. There is no nexus between that person and the borough attorney. So, I would ask that Mr. Munch do a little investigation as to that, as opposed to whoever allegedly looked this up before. The other thing is, it is a waste of time. This committee is not going to be able to sit with Fair Share Housing or any other group that has an attorney, because the council here has an attorney, although not licensed in the state of New Jersey, but we're paying them $879,000. So, what is the purpose of a group that cannot do anything? Fair Share Housing is going to laugh at you when they see you come in and say, "Let's negotiate", and they're going to say, "Okay, you want more housing?", because they're not going to give you less. And that's even if they say that to you, because for the most part, they're going to tell you, "Take a hike, you have a lawyer". A waste of money and time. Now, also, last week, I brought to the attention of everyone about the fact that it is illegal to do business with an enterprise that is not licensed in the state of New Jersey. Apparently, Mr. Munch agrees with me, because he wrote a letter to Cat Waller saying that he was not going to have anything to do with Cat Waller. He's smart. He's very smart. He's washing his hands of this entire situation, because he knows that is what's happening here is illegal, and that Tim, Mark, and Ramon are responsible for this. When you brought the citizens of Angled Cliff for hundreds of thousands of dollars, our tax dollars, to hire and pay a fellow that is not licensed to do business in New Jersey, and that it is illegal to pay, it'd be smart not to leave fingerprints. But there are fingerprints all over the crime scene, and those fingerprints are Tim Kachubis, Mark Park, Ramon Farrow. The smart one of the equation, Mario Cranjack. I always... you know, I give you credit where credit's due, because you got these fools to do what you wanted. Okay, these potential felons to do what you wanted, and your fingerprints are on the murder weapon. They're not on the crime scene. There's nothing there. You are absolutely brainless on this vote. Mario, you were smart enough to wear gloves, and Ramon, Mark, and Tim, you're the gloves. You're the hand-means of his efforts, and you're the ones who are going to hang for it. You're the ones that are going to be the ones... Testing, one, two.
Mine's not working, Mr. President.
That's not true, mine was working fine.
Right, the mine wasn't, so...
What?
So, we're on the equal ground now.
When we are equal ground...
We're on the equal ground.
What is to be done? I have a thought, so you don't need the mic.
But I don't like when David DiGorio plays games with his microphone.
All right. Fine. Okay, no problem. So, now, the borough attorney will have nothing to do with Cat Waller, but one, two, three, whip. What does that tell you? It tells you that something stinks in Angled Cliff, and it stinks from the head down. So, right now, we have a very interesting situation. When Mark, Tim, and Ramon took their seats, they gave an oath of allegiance. And I'm going to read this oath of allegiance that you guys gave when you were sworn in. "We do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to say, and to the governance established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people..." You put your hands on a Bible and swore solemn oath to uphold the laws of this state. You put your hand on a Bible, Mark, and you said, "I'm going to abide and I'm going to uphold the laws of the State of New Jersey", and you violated the law. Tim, same Bible, same hand, and you are violating your oath and the law. Ramon, shame on you, same situation, hand on the Bible, you read this oath, not worth the paper it's written on. You're absolutely, positively pathetic to have violated your oaths of office. You are violating the law of this state. There was a play, Man for All Seasons, okay? There's a very famous scene where Thomas More, who's been accused, okay, of crimes, has an individual get on the stand and lie, and violate his oath, and violate the oath so that they can, one, he can secure office, which he was given the office of the Attorney General Wales, and two, that he can sink and have executed now-St. Thomas More. And More says, "Wales, by Richard, it profits a man nothing to give his soul for the whole world but for whales". And I put this to you, Mark, Ramon, and Tim, if it profits you nothing to forsake your soul, and by the way, your sworn oaths for the whole world, is it worth doing it for Mario? You people need to resign immediately. What kind of a legacy are you standing up for when you violate your own oath of office? All these people, hypocrites, they stand up, put their hand on the Bible, and then they violate the law. Very impressive legacy there, Tim. Very impressive legacy, a elder of the church. Ramon, ashamed. Resign, folks. You too. What?
Pick up your mess.
No, it's not worth the papers written on.
Pick up your mess.
No. That doesn't make it up. They violated it.
Eutheroism, which is not kind, and it's disrespectful. Is there ever a meeting where you could come and not be disrespectful? But just for the record, Mr. Munch is a defendant in the litigation that has him so exercised, okay? And he's here as a defendant, we have counsel, I don't know if he has counsel, we're not going to comment on that, but there was one thing last week that kind of piqued my interest, and I went back and I listened to it on the tape. Debbie Sabari said that Tim Kachubis met with you for two hours in your office.
He didn't say that, she didn't say that at all.
It's on the tape.
You're a liar.
It's on the tape.
You're a liar.
It's on the tape.
You could say it's on the tape, but she didn't say that at all.
But he actually told me he did meet with you.
You said, you said...
So, what did he meet with you about?
You said, you said...
What did he meet with you about?
I don't know, Debbie Sabari said.
You guys made up, kind of patched things up.
I never said I met with anybody.
You said you could talk to whoever you want, and then...
That's...
Mario, I'll tell you what, when you come to meet me at my office, I'll tell you everything.
You and I never will meet.
What?
We will never meet.
We meet all the time.
We will never meet.
Oh, don't lie.
No, we will never meet.
We see each other all the time.
No, I'm too busy working.
That's why we do this stuff back in the fort. It's like Dean Martin and Jerry Lewis.
Can you pick up the mess, really? It's ridiculous.
No, let them pick it up. The other ones who violated it.
No, but you're... you know you're a defendant, so this probably won't get used against you.
What are you going to do, get me on littering now?
Yes, Mr. O'Shea.
Mary O'Shea, 12 Burgin Avenue. I hate to bring this up again, but again, this meeting was not advertised in the Bergen Record, okay? Now, I know Ms. Borges knows how to post ads, because she did put in the one about the ordinance, but repeatedly, every meeting is not advertised. Other towns' meetings are advertised, even if it's a little at this big, date, time, and place, $12, $15. I can't understand why our ads are not in. If they've ever been sent in or received or acknowledged, okay, but I printed up all the page from the Bergen Record legal notices, and none of our meetings are published. The last, the one that was published was September 13th, which Ms. Borges didn't have anything to do with, so that one did get in, but tax assessment notices, I know, capital, capital ordinance was posted, planning board is posted, tax sales is posted, but Ms. Borges does not get our meetings publicized, and that is something that has to be corrected. It's wrong, because in the beginning of your meeting, in your Open Public Meetings Act statement, you say it's published in the Record. statement, you say it's published in the record. Well, it's not published in the record, okay? And Ms. Chin Thompson, Chin, says, "Oh, it's on the website. It's supposed to be published in the newspaper." It's not published in the newspaper. So I suggest you get your act together and get it right for a change. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public? Yes, I see a hand in the back.
Karen, Karen, I have two seventy out there. I have a question.
Sorry, can't hear you.
Please give me a mic.
Absolutely.
Because I don't.
You have a great question.
Ms.?
Ms. Geiger.
Thank you.
Hold on, let me, let me do the, uh.
Listen, if it doesn't scream.
This is my best attempt.
Could you, uh, he just, what did he just say? Say it loud, so everyone can hear. Say it loud, come on, say it loud.
My mic's not working. No worries. No seasons.
No, make it, it goes on.
I think I had to do something for you.
Give it to me one second, and I'll take care of it.
Come on, David. Karen is waiting. Come on, David.
Agitate yourself, don't you? Look at this model.
Ms. Geiger is waiting, Karen.
Sibling, sibling.
You stink if you weren't such a vengeful person.
There's no cursing here, please. It's not cursing, David.
I swear.
But being a decent person.
Hello? Okay.
I'm Ms. Geiger.
Okay, question. Question. On the agenda, there's a not-to-exceed for special counsel, we have all heard, an increase of forty thousand dollars. There is also an item upon the executive session agenda, Tucci versus the Borough of Angler Cliff. Mr. Tucci is an attorney in the law firm that, the same law firm as Thomas Trotner, who represented the Borough in the affordable housing litigation. Mr. Tucci had submitted an Oprah request to the Borough multiple times and didn't receive an answer. One of the people.
Did you write it for him?
One of the people who was involved in responding to Mr. Tucci was Ann Marie Rizzuto, who is affiliated with the Weenawood Law Room. Very curiously, the same Ann Marie Rizzuto is now representing the Borough in the lawsuit, the Oprah lawsuit, of which she played a part, because she is one of the people who is quoted in civil correspondences as not responding. I'd like to know why this council is using a person who is involved herself in these Oprah responses to represent the Borough, where the Borough is being sued, and part of the culpability may lie with her. Can you please explain that to me? Anybody? I guess not. I also want to know what role Ms. Rizzuto plays in Oprah requests. As you know, I have submitted Oprah requests, no answers. Ms. O'Shea has submitted them, she's suing. Mrs. DiGoro has submitted them, she's suing. Somehow, I can't say who else has submitted Oprahs, because we never get Oprahs responded to.
Me to her request last week in the evening for the night review.
Have you got anything from Cadwallader?
I don't, I don't understand who is reviewing these. Ms. Gorges, if I were to call her, would say, "It's out of my hands." People are have to review it. I want to know who in this, on behalf of the mayor and council, is reviewing the Oprah responses and delaying them, and I certainly hope that the person who is part of the problem in delaying them is not then being the same person who is defending us against that law. It just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, that was very enlightening. Anybody else want to comment? Anybody, maybe Padavano? Anybody else? No, it's not. I don't want you to close the call.
You got an envelope.
It's really not too technologically difficult, David.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Is it possible to make a motion for a resolution, a special meeting, please?
Sure.
Like to call a special meeting? You made a suggestion before, perhaps between Christmas and New Year's?
Sure.
Would that work for everybody? Or so would they? But then, would you like? I'll see.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth?
Twenty-sixth.
Uh, the twenty-eighth is fine with me.
Fine with you.
Okay, so twenty-eighth, special meeting.
So you say action.
Yeah, we moved it because of the holidays, so we just moved it the following week, or maybe it would be easier for everybody. So that was a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
So there's a second, can I have a, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Farrell, are you in favor?
Yes.
Yes, we're the twenty-eighth.
Alvin Park voted yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody opposed?
I have no.
Anybody opposed? Okay, Mr. DiGorio, I didn't hear you on any of those.
What time?
I don't know.
Same time, seven-thirty.
Same time, the meeting's different, so what time is it?
Be in the favor.
Seven-thirty. There's resolution twenty-twenty-one dash two forty-two. This is the resolution authorizing a not-to-exceed for special counsel, inner law room, LLP. You have a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Can I have a call?
Discussion or comment?
During discussion? Karen already said what you want to say.
No, but if you want to let it go.
She's already said it, and she probably read her next article already.
So how much is the, we're at forty thousand, what are we increasing it from?
I don't.
That's what I thought, so I'm going to vote no, because you can tell me what we're increasing it from.
Maybe Mr. Concin can tell us.
That's it, that's all I have for discussion. Thank you.
Do you have any answer to that question?
I believe their, their initial amount was one hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Do we have to see that following? Sign off?
Yes, she said it.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. We've discussed it. Can I have a roll call?
Councilman Farrell?
Yes.
Councilman Far?
Yes.
Councilman DiGorio?
No.
Councilman Luciana?
No.
Council President Ketrupus?
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
End of business?
It's a special meeting. There's nothing on the agenda, sir. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
All favor. I, I, where, where adjourned? Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.